Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the School District of the City of Dearborn Regular Meeting, December 6, 2021. It is 7:08. I'd like a roll call to start the meeting.
Trustee Sam Berry. Trustee Sam Berry, can you hear us?
Barry not.
I don't think he's hearing us.
All right, well, you can see that he's there, and we can tell you he's in.
I can hear you guys now.
Oh, now.
All right.
Trustee Sam Berry.
Present, work-related, Hollywood, Florida.
Trustee Patrick D. Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Yeah.
Trustee Adam Mazup here. Trustee Mary Petishkov.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here.
President James Thorpe.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, Ms. Iman Ahmed, Principal of Salina Intermediate, will introduce students who will lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands one nation, under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone. We wanted to start with a moment of silence to recognize what the victims of Oxford, the victims, their families, the entire school community. We have two former employees who worked there, Sam Barna, Tony Sarkins. I know the superintendent well, and I know other individuals have connections, and they're right in our backyard. And so, you know, our thoughts and prayers go out to them, to their families, to the entire school community in Oxford, and Michigan, and the nation for that matter. So if we could take a moment of silence, please, appreciate that. Thank you. So next, as we speak of Oxford, I'm proud of our students across the district. It's being coordinated. There's going to be an event next Thursday at 6:00 PM, just outside the police station on the east side. Or this, excuse me, this Thursday coming up. Thank you. This Thursday, and it's being coordinated by our superintendent student advisory council, which is a group of great students from all the high schools throughout the district. And they wanted to have a vigil. I'm on their chat. They've been communicating since last week to get this moving. They're also going to be running a fundraiser. I know the board received one. I actually purchased these for you.
Oh, thank you.
To, the money is going to go back to Oxford and the victims and the charities that are suffering right now as a result of the tragedy. So the students plan to have several speakers there. I will be there as well, and I know there'll be others from the city that'll be there. And so, we welcome anyone to come out. I know that they are recommending, even though it's outside, they're still recommending mask usage, given that we're dealing with COVID. But we put up the flyer up on the board, and very proud of the students. Again, they were constantly communicating with one another and have done a great job putting this together. And, you know, student leadership is fantastic in our district. So I'm pleased that they're putting this event together so that we can honor Oxford victims. I also want to mention about social media threats and things that have been occurring. I know that most of you probably saw several communications that I've put out and the district has put out. I want to thank Chief Haddad and the Dearborn Police for the outstanding partnership that we have. Last week, we did have some threats made towards schools. We treat every threat as a viable threat until it's determined not to be. It turned out, we were able, through the police department, you know, they can issue warrants, they can track down through the technology experts, and we did track down where they came from. And all the threats were determined to be non-viable. They were pranks, in most cases, that were being played by students. These students will be facing some serious disciplinary consequences through our process in the school district and also potentially through the court system that's handled through the Dearborn Police and the prosecutor's office. So we take those issues very seriously. Student safety is a top priority in this district, whether it be for COVID-related issues or potential active shooter situations. These are very serious matters, and the amount of resources and the amount of stress and anxiety that brings into the school community, we ask individuals and we ask parents, you know, to really be talking to the students and ensuring that we're not doing these sort of things. I think that night on Thursday, when we had a few coming in, I had spoken to Chief Haddad about seven times. I have multiple personnel involved, and so did the police department. So again, I want to thank the Dearborn Police and our school resource officers, Sergeant Segalas, even today. There were some additional incidents that didn't involve Dearborn, but they were on top of it, and it's just a great sense of security for us to be able to work with them. I want to ask Mr. Leacher to come up, who is our safety and security specialist, and he's going to talk about some of the safety protocols that we have in place. And a lot of us, pre-COVID, when the Parkland shooting occurred in 2018, that was the big thing that we were looking at and how to increase security within the school. So we had already started long ago in implementing. Then COVID hit, and we were online for much of last year. We were revamping it, and we're moving into some new protocols that we've been introducing with staff prior to what happened in Oxford. Plans were already in place. And again, the board was proactive with some agreements with the city and other things. So I'll let Mr. Leacher speak to some of those processes.
Board members. So by way of historical, from the beginning of the year, the school year, beginning of the school year, we discussed moving forward. Started looking at that when I, before COVID started, then when COVID hit, and we went online. That, that was a bad seed, really was a bad seed, pretty much to, to deal with the pandemic. Again, beginning of the school year, that was first almost on my list. That emergency operation plan was gone over for the better part of about a month. As I looked at it, updated it, it should be something that's updated on a very regular basis anyway, at least yearly. Submitted the updates that I had to the city emergency manager. The senior emergency manager had our emergency plan, the district plan in his possession for roughly two, three weeks. He got that back to me with his sign off. Now, again, required by law is that that plan now is reviewed by the police department. It was handed off to the police department last week. I've been in touch with it. Can we catch the side? So Valens, who is our SRO supervisor, he has, only today, he expects that to be approved or be a review, update at least, in a day or two. Once that's done, I have templates prepared already on our district-wide emergency operation plan, which I'll each one of the building administrators, so they can give review of plans. We'll know that kind of very detailed process. So moving forward from that, once that's completed, we'll start scheduling tabletop exercises. Once the plan's developed and looked at, from the tabletop, we move into individual building exercises to exercise the plan. And then from there, we do move into what's already been done a couple of times prior to my arrival, is actually practicing full-scale exercises. So it is a process. That process would be moving forward. I think it's moving forward a bit at a good pace, at a good speed. And I can't speak highly enough of the Dearborn Police Department and their added value to this is moving forward. Sergeant Segalas, several of our SROs are trained in the ALICE protocol, which is our response to an active shooter type situation. Jeremy Kapowski approached me today at 9:00 PM and said, hey, you know, there's like five or six of us that are trained ALICE instructors, right? I said, I was aware of that. You're moving forward to working with you on this. I said, well, that's funny that I already have a meeting scheduled with Chad Hansen to talk about just that. So all these pieces are moving at the same time. This was all at the beginning of the school year. So we've been working on this for quite some time. Unfortunately, with events that occurred last week, it brings all of this to the forefront with all of us. But rest assured, this is something that the police department and I and all of our administration team are on top of and will move forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you, John. If I could add that, the other thing with this whole situation, we know there's a lot of stress out there. Mike Asale is going to talk a little later in the presentation about social emotional. I want to remind people that we do have a hotline for those that need support, families or students, 313-827-8500. Another tool that we have is, and trustee Barry, you contacted me on this, and I did put it out on the blog, the state runs what they call an OK to Say, where you can report situations anonymously, if you choose. I want to put the caveat, though, in an emergency, you still want to call 911. You don't want to rely on these sites where you can submit anonymous information if it's imminent danger. We also have, and we used to implement this, but we revamped it through Mr. Addy. We have what we call a student-safe voice box on every single website of every school, and students can submit information there, or parents. It can be anonymous, or they can provide the name. If they provide the name, it's better for us to track down. But again, I want the caveat to be, it's going to say, in an emergency, call 911, because these boxes and information are not checked every minute. So if there's an emergency, you need to call the police to call the, you know, the dispatch. But those are a few other tools we have. And the last thing I just want to mention, and I spoke to President Thorpe about this today, and trustee Barry, we do have drills that are required. What I asked administrators to do, it's required by the state, after Oxford had occurred, I had asked to kind of put on hold of the surprise drills. We do fire, as a building principal, we would do fire, disaster, shelter, and then active shooter drills. And what I've asked our administrators to do, at least for the rest of this year, is if they're going to do an active shooter, to let the public know if they're going to do a drill. Now, the public is going to have to be aware of this, and we're going to put notification out that in January, we will do some where it's not going to be announced as a drill, and we have to do that by law. It's also part of your training. It's better to do those kind of drills where you don't know what's coming during aspects of the day. I also need to ask the parents for their cooperation, and we started doing this with the PTA two years ago. I went to the PTA council, and we're going to need their help, but we're going to get more information. In an emergency situation, we do not, in a true situation, we do not want people coming to the building, parents or anyone. If the police, and we've been trained on this, if the police see individuals, they will not know if they actually belong in the building or they're hostile. Secondly, we want the students to stay in place. So that's going to be something we're going to continue to get out to parents. Please don't rush to the building until an all-clear or notification comes from the official school chain of communication. So I got to stress that, too. There's a lot of social media stuff that is not official district communication. It's not always accurate. Rely on the district communication channels. So I just wanted to add those additional tools.
Trustee Petishkov.
Yeah, and I want, because there is so much going on on Facebook, and some of it is inaccurate. When we do, and a lot of the questions revolved around either metal detectors at the buildings, and that's something down the road that we would have that conversation about. We clearly don't have them present right now. The lockdown drills, the active shooter drills, I know in the past, we did have some active shooter drills that involved the city response team as well, and I believe we were using, it was before Mr. Leacher's time, and it was using ADD rather than ALICE. So some of our students may have gone through an active shooter drill of some sort or another. The typical lockdown active shooter drills, are they only held at the high schools, or does it go down to the middle school level? And/or is it similar to what they would experience with ALICE or the ADD drill? So have some of our students at least gotten that experience at this point in time?
So I can just comment that it would be at all levels.
Elementary included?
Without getting into tactical reasons. We've actually run one at an elementary building, the full scale. It was actually William Ford a few years back. But you may be dealing with the different strategies differently depending on the age of the students. That's all I will say publicly for some of our protocols, and we do have training that will occur. But ALICE will be the model, preschool through 12th grade, for all of our students. But the way you react to situations may be different, tweaked, based on what students are able to do. You know, unfortunately, you know, we saw with the videos of the barricading and other things that will happen, what a high school level, you may be doing things a little different than in a kindergarten class. So those things, people are trained on, and it's, law enforcement has spoken to that. I don't know, John, if you want to add.
Yeah, if I just could comment a little bit on that, trustee Petishkov, it's like age appropriate, right? So, again, the template that'll go out will be the same district-wide, the individual building characteristics, like your crisis team, places you would go in evacuation, reunification sites. Those will be building-specific, but the overall plan will be universal. So a lockdown's a lockdown's a lockdown. If you're going to do a lockdown with a group of kindergartners, it's going to look a little bit different than the exercise you might practice with high schoolers. So I think that, to your point, it's going to be age-appropriate. And I've talked with many administrators that are very, very adamant about making sure they are age-appropriate, because we don't want to traumatize our students, right? But at the same time, we want them to know, hey, if the teacher says, okay, what does a lockdown look like? Everybody knows exactly what that means, and that should look the same, and that will look the same from building to building.
Well, I just want to make sure, because what we're reading on some of these blog sites is they say they've asked their kids, have you experienced a lockdown drill or any of this? And their kids are telling them, no, I don't have any clue. So I kind of want to understand what these kids have experienced, and are they recognizing it for what it is? Or are there many of our buildings that maybe the kids have somehow either forgotten or missed that opportunity?
So these, this, the implementation of this started after 1999 Columbine. So anyone in the district has been receiving these drills since kindergarten.
That's what I thought.
And it's required by law every year. So every student who's been in a district in Michigan, and probably any state for that matter, this is Michigan.
Should have experienced.
Has gotten, has received multiple drills. Now, have the tactics changed over time? Yes, as you start moving in ALICE, but the actual lockdown, they would have been doing since kindergarten. And I think most of them would tell you that they've done them since kindergarten, because they're routines.
Apparently, some didn't recognize what it was.
Well, it's a lockdown, and if you want to then say, well, ALICE, well, we're in the process of converting into that strategy that we're going to implement. So that may be part of it. But anyone in our district, because we have to report it through the state, has been receiving them, like I said, since kindergarten.
And that report is online. I do know that as well.
Yeah, and we have to update that online. Yes.
Trustee Moses.
Thank you. Obviously, thank you to Dr. Maliko for sending, posting that letter to send condolences on behalf of the entire district to the Oxford family. It is definitely news that no parent wants to receive about their school, about their kid's school. It seems like this is a trend in this country, unfortunately, that we don't see in other countries. We do see in other countries where there is a loss of life, there are fights going on, but rarely where we see these kind of acts in schools where somebody would go in and take the lives of students and teachers and staff, which is frightening to everybody. And every time it happens, we ask ourselves, what can we do to prevent this from happening in our backyard? And I'm glad that we're talking about these things, but it is a responsibility for everybody. It's not only a responsibility for the school or parents alone. It's the responsibility of everybody. I was just listening to NPR this morning, and they were saying that the state of Michigan does not require parents to keep weapons locked. I was shocked to hear that. That's something that definitely our legislatures really need to look into. Following the Oxford, and I obviously don't want to drill too much into it, but they were saying this could have been prevented. And those four individuals who lost their lives would have been still with us. So obviously, as a district, we definitely need to do our homework. We need to do everything possible to making sure that our students are safe in our schools and our buildings. I believe we leave that to the experts as far as what kind of technologies we implement. I've read a lot about metal detectors over the past week on research, more than anything else that I've read on. And you have a lot of debate on that. Does it really add value? Is a person who actually going to come into the school walking through the detector? So we have to take the best practice, the things that do really work, and implement them in our schools. As far as pranks, Dr. Maliko, it is a very, very scary situation. And I want to tell parents and stress that even more, that we really have to talk with our kids about the importance of not spreading this. If you see a threat, obviously, to report it to the, to the proper channels, to your principal, to the administrators. But yeah, this is no joke. You cannot make an empty threat like that. The police, the administration will take every threat seriously. So in that realm, I'd like to also commend our women and men in blue, who have been very vigilant before and after the Oxford incident, in protecting our schools and responding to every call that we make from the district. And I have one question about the ALICE training. So do we have individuals like police officers or folks who are fully certified in ALICE training? Do these trainings, or are we showing videos to staff and teachers?
So, thank you for the question. That's a great question. So, to answer the first part, yes, we have several officers that are trained ALICE instructors, fully trained instructors. That's the group I'm going to tap into once we start, once we start implementing the training. We also have at least one administrator that has had the training as well. So hopefully be able to tap into that resource as well as we start moving forward. Your question about videos, that was actually the first part of the ALICE protocol that was rolled out last week. The videos were, it's part of what our training program consists of through ALICE. This training video is an introduction, and at the end of that video, the nice thing about it is, is that all of our staff will have the ability to go back and review that whenever they want to. So as you touched on, living in these types of situations, or going through these types of situations, how heart-wrenching and heartbreaking it is, and the toll it takes on our instructional staff, I can't even imagine. Coming from a law enforcement background, unfortunately, you know, you never get used to something like this, but it becomes part of basically what you do to deal with. And our instructional staff isn't supposed to have to do that, right? So it's hard to get to a place where we say, this is something you should be thinking about all the time. Because I don't want them to have to think about that. I want them to be thinking about teaching our kids, right? Because that's their most important job. But at the same time, part of this training is to encourage our staff, please make this part of your staff meetings. Make this part of what you visit on a regular basis. Don't wait for someone to come in like me or a police officer to talk to you about it. We're going to do that. But in between those times, that resource is there. So, great question. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's very important that we have instructors, live instructors, because I remember taking that training myself when I was teaching a program at a nonprofit. And they were, we had, as instructors, we had a lot of questions about, okay, what if this situation happened? What if this situation happened? So it would be nice to have somebody who is an expert and certified in that matter. So thank you. Thank you for taking the lead on that.
You're welcome. Trustee Watts.
Mr. Leacher, you had mentioned in your presentation about tabletop, that you would first, can you remind us what table, what that is?
Sure, great question. So a tabletop exercise is when we go in, we sit down with, and again, the police department would be involved with this as well. They've expressed a lot of interest in that, and I want them at the table with this. Sit down with the administration, their crisis team, and you present a scenario, and you walk through it. And you sit around a table, and you talk about what you would do. So after you talk about what you would do, and you kind of go through, and all this is designed to exercise the plan at different levels. If you identify a place where the plan needs to be updated at that level, you can do that, fix it, then move to the next level. So every single time we train, we're getting better and better at it, and it's not wasted training, right? So we sit down at the table, we go through these scenarios and say, okay, what would you do? And if there's questions, well, what does your, what does your EOP say, your emergency operations plan?
Thank you.
Does that address, yeah, I say that all the time. Sorry, I talk in, I talk in acronyms all the time. If the EOP addresses it, great, then we should know where that is, and we should know what that says. Is there something we need to add to the EOP that's going to make this clear so moving forward, we know exactly what to do in this situation? If we don't have it in the EOP, what are you going to do at the building level? As Dr. Maliko alluded to, you can't put in the EOP, call 911 all the time, because 911 isn't what you're going to do all the time. But there's going to be those situations where you're going to. So you sit down, what's the first thing you do? Well, I'd call, I'd call 911. Is that the first thing you should do, or should you do something else? That's what a tabletop is for. The benefit of having our SROs there, again, them being very familiar with the police department procedures, they can interject and say, okay, here's what, here's what I do, or here's when we need to be notified in, as you're going playing through this scenario. So that's what tabletops do for us.
And then can you then explain what SROs, who they are, and what their role is? Because not all, not all buildings have SROs, correct?
Not all buildings have SROs, but there is an SRO assigned to every one of our buildings. So some have multiple buildings.
And what are SROs?
School resource officers. Yes. Our school resource officers are dedicated presence to our buildings. Every day, they come to our sporting events. Mr. Mashur, if he was here, could get up and speak volumes about them. He has, he's worked with them in even a closer capacity than I do. They are awesome with our kids. They have great rapport with them. They, they almost without fail can talk a situation, talk through a situation with students and talk them out of getting in trouble rather than getting into trouble. I can tell you that with 30-plus years of law enforcement experience and dealings with multiple school resource officers and school resource programs, I've never seen one that works as well as this one. I just, the rapport, the way the police department recruits those officers, they are exactly the, the, the men and women we need in our school buildings. They have exactly, it's that right, the right personality, that right, that ability to connect with kids, and I watch them do it. I watch them do it all the time. They're phenomenal.
So are they then connected to the Dearborn Police Department? How were, how, what's the connection? You had mentioned some.
They are actually, they're sworn police officers.
Okay. So they, so it's not a third party or a different entity? It's not a?
No, no.
Okay.
Which again, is a great, it's again, it's a great resource to us. As Dr. Maliko alluded to, Sergeant Segalas, at, literally at the drop of a hat, will answer my phone calls 24/7 and get us whatever resources we need in a non, in a non-law enforcement need. When we were running COVID clinic, our COVID vaccination clinics, and there was a communication, miscommunication on a Saturday for the clinic that was supposed to start at 10 o'clock, and I'm in Nenzel Ford at like 8:30. I'm supposed to have two SROs. And I called Sergeant Segalas and said, hey, I thought you guys were going to help me out with this. He goes, nobody from the school called me. And I said, okay, so that might have been me. I might have forgot to tell somebody. So I said, can you bail me out? And within an hour on a Saturday, he had two officers there for me. So this is the type of, that relationship that we build through that program is what gets us that kind of a response. So they're very, they're a great resource and very invaluable to us.
Thank you.
Chief Haddad was very instrumental in getting grants to pay for most of our SRO programs over the years.
There's no additional questions? We'll
We'll go back to Dr. Maliko.
And yeah, just to mention, Chief Adad has been absolutely outstanding since I've been in the district and appreciate his great support. Okay, I'm going to move along to retirements. Thank you, Mr. Leacher. We have Nadia Harara, twenty two years of service. And we have Timothy Thomason with twenty one years of service. We appreciate their years of service and we congratulate them on their retirement. Moving along, I wanted to mention our COVID response plan. We continue to look at our data across the district. We have done it with our cabinet, with our nurses, and we do it on a building by building level, classroom by classroom. And so our approach has been to have mitigations that keep students safe, which includes promoting the vaccines. And I want to mention that we have several vaccine clinics that will be implemented. We'll be going out in the elementary buildings next week and the and after the break as well. And that is part of our mitigation to continue to promote the vaccines. We also have other mitigation, as everyone's aware, with the masks and other things we do in the buildings. We're doing testing to exempt to get students, if they're within a classroom and they test negative and they have no symptoms, it can be an exemption from quarantine rules under those protocols. Secondly, we're looking at the class level. So we have had to implement quarantine for specific classes and in one case, a school. When I look at the data as a district, overall, the percentage is is, you know, less than probably point three to point four percent of our total staff and students overall. And when I looked at the week after the Thanksgiving break, which included, you know, the Thanksgiving days of the holidays, which was about five days, we still had at that time, you know, about twenty two buildings with zero cases. Now, the one thing I want to commend the parents in the community is because we understand on the Monday, and I want to thank you for following. I know our nurses do a great job. They pump this out. A lot of the positive cases that were reported, they never came into the school. They stayed home, but they still reported and it goes on a report. So that's how you really help. And I appreciate the great work that Ms. Farage does and all the executives putting that data together. So if we're going to look at quarantines, we start with the classroom first, then the school if needed. And in one case, we did have how about two two months ago where we did that. And we will only look at the district if it becomes extremely widespread. Again, safety of the students, the staff and the community is number one. But we're going to look at the building breakdown before we make any decision. So I just wanted to get that out there publicly as well. When it comes to the vaccine, I mentioned about students and anyone can come to our clinics that we've run several since the start of since we've been authorized. For our staff, we are still, we are preparing for January fourth to be the mandatory time where staff will either have to submit their vaccine card, but it's all staff, or be subjected to weekly testing. HR will has already put out notices and there'll be another notice going out next week to give people an opportunity to voluntarily submit their vaccine cards so that they won't have to get the weekly testing protocol, which is part of federal. Now, there is a caveat and it is that it is now being challenged in the courts. So we're preparing for the fact of implementation. And if the courts hold it up or if they determine it to be not constitutional or any other ruling, then it wouldn't be implemented, obviously, but we would still promote the vaccine. We would still do testing in our schools. So I wanted to mention that. The other thing I I'm going to mention is we are dealing with massive staff shortages, as everyone's aware, across the state, across the nation. We've been very proactive. We've been having conversations with all our union groups. We've settled letters of agreement with all of our unions, including our DFSE. And then most recently, we had a letter with the DFT. I'm going to ask Eric to put on the screen an example of some of the increases for both retention and recruitment. I will also mention that Ms. Hilda Ariani's responsibilities have been realigned into specifically retention and recruitment. And we have a subcommittee that's working on strengthening, continue to strengthen, grow your own in partnerships with universities and looking at other areas where we're competitive to support teachers. Having said that, if you look at this screen, this is a starting salary and you look at twenty twenty one after the two letters of agreements. So there was twenty twenty one would have been last year. There was a letter of agreement in June. There's another letter of agreement with the DFT most recently in November. If you can see, the starting salary, we actually up that that we're one of the highest starting salaries in the state when it comes to first year teachers. So that will just give you an idea of what we've increased to be competitive. Here's another example on the pay scale. Again, that's twenty, most of these increases on average are about twenty percent plus and not total compensation, just salary and other bonuses for teachers. So if you look right here in this case, this would have been a teacher with master's and that would be their salary. We'll skip on to the next one. This would be an example of a teacher has been in the district several years in in. I believe they would have been hired, oh, worked since two thousand eight as an example. And you can see that salary went from seventy thousand up to eighty nine thousand this year to last year or last year to this year. And here would be an example of a teacher at the top step, master's degree with, again, this is total compensation, not total, but this is total salaries, including the bonus that we're also providing. So if you can see, it would have been eight eighty seven, seven ninety seven, and that is now up to ninety eight thousand four thirty one. So we're being very competitive for both retention and recruitment, if you can see. And I appreciate the part, the great job that our HR has done. And I appreciate the partnership with the union heads, including the DFT, to work together to ensure that we have good compensation across the board, starting salaries to the top salaries. And we'll continue to work with that. And I know we've had people come here, so I wanted to mention that. I'm going to have David come up to talk about the bond and where we're at with the community committee. Please, thank you, Mr. Musson.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Maliko. So in we are in the process of planning for a potential bond initiative to put on the ballot in November of twenty twenty two. We know that we have certain infrastructure needs. We know that we have certain technology needs. We know that we have certain safety and security needs as well. However, we want to also include some future visioning of what we want our our schools, our learning spaces to look like. To help us with that propos with that process and to help us put together a proposal that will be shared with the board for your final approval, we are assembling a citizens committee. We have had an application process has been opened for several week weeks now. It has been publicized in all the local media and also on social media as well. And we have sent some individual invitation letters to several different groups and organizations throughout our community, asking them to also have somebody apply from from their group. That application process ends this Friday. It was supposed to end last Friday, but we extended it one more week. And so this Friday is the deadline for those who are interested in submitting an application of interest to be part of that citizens committee. As of today, I believe there were about forty six or forty seven people who have stepped up and and expressed an interest. And and that's a good number that we're looking for. Their timeline, they will begin meeting in January. They will meet five or six times, depending on how the group works. That group will be facilitated by a third party outside independent facilitator that the the district has hired to lead that group. And as I mentioned, when that group is done, they will make their recommendations to the Board of Education on what they feel should be included in that bond proposal. The district will support that group with our resources available to us, the experts in our different areas, instruction and operation, to provide this group with the needed facts and data that they will need to help them build that proposal. Included in their meetings will also be a some field trips out to some schools so that they will get to visit schools and see the current condition of existing buildings, the good and the not so good. Then they will make that proposal to all of you sometime in early March. So that's where we are with the with with looking at a tentative November date for a November of twenty twenty two bond proposal, if if that's the direction that the board ultimately decides going in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, Trustee Watts.
With the committee or with, I know you had mentioned that field trips would be to visit the schools. Is there an option for those that maybe wanted to be on the committee but feel more comfortable being via Zoom? Or is it in person?
We'll examine that. We would prefer a committee of this size and the work that they're going to be doing. We would prefer that they would meet in person. We can accommodate that many people in a safe space. And I think that we would have a lot more effective meetings by having them in person. So but, you know, we'll work with those as if we can work with others. And if there are some things that we can and can't do, we'll we'll be flexible. But that is the direction that we would like to go is in person.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Moses.
Yeah, Dave, can you also explain or expand on the time commitment for those members? You mentioned five meetings. How long usually those five meetings are or six meetings?
Excellent question. Thank you, Trustee Moses. Yes, the meetings will be in the evening. They will be from six to eight thirty, once a week for five weeks. And then if needed, a sixth week. They will start in January, mid-January is when the first meeting will start and they will run every week. I think there's one meeting that has a two week gap in between. But there is about a two and a half hour time commitment for each meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just two more things. There was the Goodfellas Drive going over the weekend and we want to thank all the Goodfellas for their great support in the community for those of you. I know a lot of us had participated and we had a group on the corner of Cherry Hill and Outer Drive, as we always do for the district. And I know many of you were in other supportive methods within the Goodfellas Drive, so I want to thank everyone. I also, and I know we're going to have formal recognition when we come in January, but I know this is trustee or President Thorpe's last meeting presiding over the P twelve, other than the organizational meeting. So I just want to, you know, thank him for a great job under some tough circumstances this year. But again, we'll have our formal presentations in January. But since it's the last official meeting here at the P twelve, I wanted to mention it as I always do. And the last thing that I'll just say is happy holidays to everyone. I know we have some some music a little later here and I know everyone deserves the break. This year especially like no other, and I hope you enjoy the time with your family and your friends and, you know, be safe over the holidays. Thank you.
Additional questions for Dr. Maliko on any of the other points? Trustee Watts.
Going back to the, you had mentioned the vigil this Thursday and we had mentioned the bracelets. Where can those individuals purchase bracelets?
They they're selling them within the high schools. So the Student Advisory Council has them, I believe, right, Ms. Harris?
Yes, and I.
And this, oh, we have some here as well.
Okay, and then. And then can we add, I know that there's many people in our community that have been looking for a way to donate to the Oxford community. Could we add a link to, I believe it's Oxford Bank that is taking a donation? There's two banks in Oxford, but if can we add that information for any of the parents or community members that are looking for a place to donate?
Sure, we can promote that.
Trustee Barry.
Yes, thank you. I know, Dr. Maliko, this is not a question, it's just a comment. You mentioned the retention and recruitment. I just want to say a big thank you to our negotiating team, did a terrific job. Thank you to our unions for their cooperation. This setup that we have with our teachers now is twofold, you know. Thank you for our veteran teachers for sticking around and, you know, dealing with the last couple of years. And it's also going to place Dearborn back where, you know, where we used to be, that everybody wants to come to Dearborn. Now, I know it's not just about the money, but, you know, sometimes it is about the money. So the fact that we are one of the highest starting positions for teachers, that should bring us the cream of the crop every year. So again, thank you to the union heads and the negotiating team for the administration. Just wanted to make sure credit was given. Thank you.
One additional item I'd go back to, as you talked about the COVID response update. And there was also concern amongst students and parents right before the Thanksgiving break because we were asking them to sign into Schoology again. And because of that, they thought we were going to be going into a virtual environment. In some ways, this would be similar to any other drill we would do in the schools. We want to make sure everyone is prepared in case we need to. We can't necessarily give you much of a of a head start on if we're going to have to move something to a virtual environment. So we need to make sure that the students and staff are ready to go that route at any point if we need to. Any additional comments? Trustee Moses.
Yeah, one question and before that, a comment regarding that. We have quarantine classrooms and asked them to stay virtual when there were cases. So I I think this is a good strategy moving forward. We're still asking families to make sure that they be careful, especially now with the new variant of COVID that is mixed with the flu, Emicron. So it is very difficult, especially in large gatherings. So still wearing the mask and and take the vaccine if you can. So the question is on transportation. I think we have an item here for you, Dr. Maliko. Did you want to cover something on that?
Oh, yes, thank you. Just on transportation, just mentioning that we are, we're going to send out a communication, but there is the potential right now, especially if we have staff that get quarantine, where we may have to cancel routes. Now, it's not, it would be done on an individual basis and we may have to tweak. We're not at a point yet where it's widespread. We're in good shape relative to many places. But we do have to be transparent with the reality that that could happen. And in some cases, a route, we would have communication from the district that would go to the parents. In some cases, the plan would be to tweak the times. We could do it for less of the day so that we would still have some transportation, but that is the reality, partially just because of the shortage. And we continue to work on recruitment. But the other caveat is just when you have staff that may have to quarantine that are bus drivers. And they would obviously be exposed because they're in more close contact, even though they wear their masks. There's a greater, you know, risk to them and we appreciate the great work that transportation staff does. Thank you. Appreciate that.